Stand with us, and I would like to call one of our visitors, Jacob Morgan, to lead us in prayer, and then after his prayer, if you would, remain standing and join us in the pledge.
Absolutely. Helen, probably thank you for this day. I thank you for your many blessings, and thank you for all those that are here today. Thank you for the leadership in our county, and thank you just to be in this part of the world, Lord. We are so fortunate and so blessed and have so many resources that so many others don't have access to. And I pray, Lord, that we would use the help and wealth that you have given us and help us to make somebody else's life better. Lord, and I pray that you would just have your hand upon us as we look to improve and do great things for this area and our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. We certainly appreciate your attendance today, your interest in the county's business. We have no public hearings scheduled and no public comment, no awards and presentation, but we do have some elected or appointed officials here, and we'll recognize them at this time to bring reports or make comments. Judge, do you have anything you want to share?
Do not. We're getting ready for an election. Absentee voting starts tomorrow.
Does it really?
Yes.
And absentee voting takes place, how does that work?
It's at the circuit clerk's office in E. Porhause. I submit to allow an application, and they'll be giving the ballot and allowed to vote.
Can they mail in a request if there are...
They submit out an application and mail it in. There's a deadline for when the mailed-in ballot has to be received, and that is several days before the election.
Okay. It's absentee voting is certainly a necessity. It's hard to do here. It's a little bit hard, cumbersome, but it works, doesn't it?
Well, there are several reasons. You can't have specific reasons to vote absentee.
Right.
And I know that the ladies in the circuit clerk's office, those very, they work very cooperative. If you're in a car and you can't get out and send in your stuff, paperwork, they'll go out and meet you.
That's right.
So if anybody has any questions, I would just encourage on the call to the circuit clerk's office, Amy Jones.
Amy Jones, that's right. Well, good deal. Thank you. Y'all don't let that slip by us. Mr. Chuck Patterson, Revenue Commissioner, I think you have a report you've put up here for us. What do you want to share?
Thank y'all for having me today, and thank you for Covington County. What I wanted to go over this morning is the abstract for 2023 versus 2024 is complete. That means that what we're going to collect from October 1st to December 31st is in this report, and I've given a breakdown where everybody can see exactly where the money's going and not be guessing on what's what. The first line you can see is the states, and you see the 23 and the 24 set come out. You see the difference, the percentages, and you see the 23, 24 taxes. So you can see the increases on the taxes, and that's what the state portion is going to get. The total amount of the, the total amount before commissions you can see for 2024 is And again, this breaks it down by every entity that the money's going to for 2024, whether it's the cities. You can see OFF is getting $577,000, Lockhart $21,000. You can see each report and see what the numbers are. You can see OFF, Andalucia, these are for education here, for OFF and for Andalucia. And Andalucia has two different villages for education, and then it gives you the breakdown of everything on the countywide village. It gives you the breakdown, this 77 indicates that that's Florrella. So Florrella will receive those two amounts for the education portion. So I tried to give everybody the detail exactly how the numbers are going to come out in 2024. And again, we'll collect this amount from October 1st to December 31st, and that's a quick time to collect what was the amount of $17 million. And you can also see here, this is kind of interesting, one thing I wanted to say here, you've got timber tax, which is paid to the forestry commission. You know, that's money that goes to them to help fight forest fires or pine beetles or whatever they have. Nusset fees, we don't like to collect them, but we have to collect them because of the state law. The city of Andalucia, OFF, Florrella, and sometimes Red Level will tear a building down, clean a house up, clean a yard up. They're supposed to collect this money, and if they don't, they turn it over to us, and we collect it with their property taxes. So we're kind of like a collecting agency for the county and for the cities if they do some kind of tear down or improvements. Is there any questions?
On that page right there, Chuck, where it shows the county down there, it shows the general fund, Covington County, basically going to get $185,000, road and bridges is going to get $92,000, so the actual county...
No, that's the difference. They're not going to get that.
I'm sorry.
They're going to get this 24 tax amount, 2.6 million, 1.3 million, and 1.5 million.
But that's the difference between 23 and 24.
The 185.
Yes.
This is the difference between 20 and 24.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. That difference is what the county's going to get, not the $2 million more they collected because of that right there. It even shows on the bottom, the fire, the fire, that $111,000 is just a pass-through to us for the three mil property tax for the fire departments.
Yeah, because you had $1.9 million that we discussed, what, two meetings ago?
Right.
And some of that got put in the paper. One point mine has spread through state.
That's what I'm getting everything correct about where it actually is going to.
That's correct. So we're getting $1.9 million more, but it's going through the state and going through the county, road and bridges, and the cities and everything. So I'm going to post this. Me and Kyle's going to work on getting this posted to our website for Covington County where everybody can see it. And if anybody has any questions, Karen, she also gets a copy of this. She knows where all the funds are going for the county, and so we give her this information as soon as we can complete it. But we are complete, and we've sent it to the state, and now all we do is start collecting. Any questions, anybody?
Questions? Commissioners, comment? All right. That's it. Thank you a lot, Chuck. Appreciate the update, and helps to have the breakdown to see how much of those additional funds are going to education, which is a significant part of it, and then to the communities, towns, so. Jacob, do you have anything you want to share from Covington County Economic Development Commission at this level?
Oh, briefly.
All right.
Because I actually had to run over to a enterprise, but I did have a chance to come by, so I want to take it. Been a busy summer. We've been actively recruiting, and it's, one of the things that kind of comes with the territory in an election year, but when you're talking about recruiting projects and people spending money, when you've got a presidential election, a lot of times people hold back. They don't really like to make a major decision until they know how that's going to turn out. So first of the year ought to be a major move in certain areas, and I think we will be in position to capitalize on that. There's definitely different sectors that we have focused a lot of emphasis on, especially with forestry being one of our biggest things. Again, we are due for some forest industry in this county. It is just a matter of time, and it is going to happen. I hope it's sooner than later, but it, we are just primed. We have some of the best choice timber of anywhere around here, and there's money to be made there and people to be hired, and I'd love to see it happen. And there are some things, small things happening in aviation that could possibly contribute to our airport as well, and retail, as far as, you know, fast food shopping and things like that. Those still seem to do fine, no matter who's getting elected. People still got to eat, so they're doing that. And I know inflation certainly hurts all of us. Hopefully, that'll get better, but we have had a good summer, made some good connections with some people, and I know here, coming in in October, be a new time for the budget. We certainly appreciate all the help that y'all can give us. We make the most of every dime that we get and use it to go and try to recruit these things, things that are reasonable and things that we think will work here. I am not interested in wasting money at all, so I want to actually put my focus on things that really could happen here. And if it's way out in left field, I'm just not going to fool with it, to be honest with you. But we got a good, good year under our belt. I tell you, again, you get something like Connecta Sausage in this area, that's a great thing. We're thankful for that and be able to have a lot of future with that. And I tell you, it's amazing how well-known that company is. As many of you may know, I mean, it's just worldwide. It's just incredible wherever we go. People are mentioning that to us, so that's a great thing. But I appreciate y'all's time. I've enjoyed seeing you throughout the year. Lord willing, I'm going to continue to be here, and just thank y'all for your time and your support.
All right. Appreciate you, Jacob. Appreciate what you guys do on our behalf.
When do you think the first sausage will happen?
Hey, that's a good question. But I think initially, when that started, they were planning like two years, two years after being completed?
I don't remember.
Maybe it was a little bit, maybe not too long.
Thank you a lot.
Thank y'all.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you received copies of the August 13 minutes, the August 27 minutes, and you've also received copies of the council's payable and payroll for the month of August. And I'll ask if there were any corrections to note in those items or questions that you have, and if there are none, then a motion to approve those items under the consent section would be in order.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion and second. Anybody else have a concern or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? I think we got a three to nothing in favor of approving that. Under old business, we, the first item is consider renewal of a contract with Avenue, and we had the attorney reviewing the proposed contract. I know Karen, you were looking at it. Are we ready for action on that, or do we need to roll it forward?
Yes, sir, we are ready. I have spoken with the representative from Avenue with our concerns, and they're working with us. I would like to ask y'all to consider renewing the contract with Avenue for three years.
The Avenue provides our collections and enforcement for sales and use tax primarily, some other areas. They've done that for years. The alternative, there may be another private company. I'm not aware of another one that's in operation now. They have done it for years for municipalities and counties, and they've done ours for years, probably 20-plus years. The other option you have is to go with Alabama Department of Revenue. When Avenue first came into existence, the Department of Revenue had gotten really high on collection fees and processing fees, and so Avenue certainly served us well. One thing we like about them now, I know Karen has mentioned often how much she likes the reporting options that they offer, and so I would recommend as well that we renew that contract for a three-year term. Thoughts from the commission?
After I spoke with Karen this morning, and I see where they are working with us, we are below what they are charging other right now, and it's going to be gradual escalating increase, try to get it up to some of that, but I think they're doing a great job. Like you said, me and Karen was talking about actually the Department of Revenue, and she says some of their reports don't flow like they need to, so I go ahead and make a motion that we do renew that contract.
Renew that for three years. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? Morgan, you reviewed that, and you were fine with the contract with the corrections?
We'll need to make these corrections, yes, sir, but otherwise, it's...
They've agreed to that, so. All right, we have a motion and second. If there's nothing else, we'll vote all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
All right, that is Karen. Yes, ma'am. Next item under old business was consider board appointments for Florrella Airport Authority Board. There were some questions that had held us up on taking action there. We rolled it forward thinking that'd be resolved. We don't have a complete resolution on that yet, so we'll roll that item forward unless someone's opposed. We'll roll that forward to a future meeting. I assume that it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Those terms are coming to an end. Let's just assume we'll have everything we need by that time. All right. Go to new business, consider adoption of resolution for ACCA Workers' Comp Fund longevity bonus. Karen, how about sharing the details on that?
Okay, the resolution on page 51 in your packet. It's just a resolution that we will stay in this ACCA program through at least September 30th, 2027, and by doing so, that we will be eligible for our longevity bonuses on this, and we're very satisfied with the workers' comp insurance that they've provided to us. Rates have actually been lower for us. We have maintained a good relationship with them, and we were one of the two lowest counties based on some of the information that I've received on it.
Okay, so the recommendation is the adoption of the resolution, committing us to renewal or continuing in that fund. It's basically a self-insurance fund. County commissions across the state are participating in self-insure in this area, and it has served the county well for all the counties that are participating well for many years. So I can't imagine we'd want to make a change. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
This is open for three years.
Three or five, is it? I don't remember.
I would think it's for three.
Okay. Three years.
Just September 30th, 2027.
All right.
I make a motion to adopt.
Okay, in motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second to adopt the resolution. Any comment, questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right, that motion carries. Next item B is consider adoption of a resolution on page 52 and 53 in your packet. Adoption of resolution declaring the severe weather preparedness attacks holiday in Covington County, and that is proposed for what dates?
February 21st to 23rd, 2025.
All right. Anyone want to move the adoption of that resolution?
No, I'll make a motion with adopt it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Anything to discuss on that? Susan, just a question. Do you get a lot of feedback from the community on the weather preparedness?
That's right for us. There are more people made to eat come for us, and people do take advantage of that for the season.
The sorts of things that they can get, or weather radios?
Um, radios, any supplies that have to do with cooking.
Okay, so it kind of helps with the promotion of the severe weather coming up as well, doesn't it? All right, we have a motion, second to adopt the resolution. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That resolution is adopted. Next item C, consider approval of retail, table, wine, off-premises-only license for Brau Myers One Station LLC. I think Brau Myers is located in Weing, Alabama. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Unless they've opened a second one. What are your wishes on that, Commissioner? They've been there for quite some time, so they have a long history.
They already have the retail beer license. They had to add the wine due to some of the drinks that are now being offered. They have to have this extra section.
All right. Is there someone wanting to make a motion to approve or move that we don't approve?
I'll make a motion. They've already had a liquor license on them. They're doing this kind of tweaking it down.
Brau Myers probably been there five or six years as the owner.
2019, I think 2019 is when we approved the beer license.
Five years, okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same say. And you know, let me, we just approved it, but let me ask you if there's anybody here that wanted to speak on that. I would assume not, if I wasn't made aware of it, but don't want to keep you from speaking if you had concern. All right. Next item D is consider contract renewal with South Alabama, Southern Alabama Regional Council on Aging, otherwise known as Sarcoa, and they provide services to seniors in our community through the senior centers and possibly some other areas. Karen, what do we need to be told with that?
This is a contract that would offer a $13,000 grant from Sarcoa. We have to have a local match up $1,444 annually. That's a great relationship, and we've worked well with them.
So that's for in-home services. Is that the mention?
Yes, that is correct.
So commissioners, you're aware of that. You had it in your packet, and I'm sure you studied it closely and raised questions if you had any thoughts, questions.
I think it's a great program. We've been, like you said, utilizing it for a lot of the seniors in this county. I know it's really the benefit to a lot of them, so I'll make a motion that we do continue with that.
On behalf of our seniors here, I'd second it.
The ones at the table?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Sarcoa. If there is no other comment, no questions on it, then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries. Next item is, you can see on page 57 and 58 in your packet, information related to a feasibility study. You are aware, I know Michael has been heavily involved in conversations over the past months with the city of Andalucia and local citizens who have expressed interest in a pool facility or enhanced or improved pool facility. There has begun to be an awful lot of participation in swimming teams, swimming leagues, and that is a significant investment if it is to be made, and so it was determined that the best way forward was to have a feasibility study, look at all the cost and the usage and so forth. And so we've been asked by the city of Andalucia to consider sharing the cost of a feasibility study. Michael, I know you've had conversation with the lead.
I have. There's a lot of, like you said, kids now participating in the swimming program. I think somebody told me the other day, up close to 160 to 170 total in the county. These kids are the people who've asked for the feasibility study. The city of Andalucia's kind of took the lead on that, and they're interested in trying to see what the feasibility of this type of project and magnitude it would be, the impact of the county and everything. And they have asked for us to call sharing this. I think it's a good idea just to see what the outcome is. I will make a motion that we do pay our half of that.
The total fee is $25,500. Our cost will be $12,750, and certainly we don't have the, I don't think we have the knowledge here at the table to put together a study and analyze it like is needed to make that kind of decision.
And it's not us committing to building the pool. It is a study to see the feasibility of it.
All right, so there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments on that or questions?
I just think there's a lot of questions haven't been answered or asked or whatever. I did know that Michael was involved with some of this from a time past. However, it would have been fantastic, in my opinion, had the commission and the city councils will come together and discuss some of this just prior to it, but that didn't happen, and I understand sometimes it can't happen for various reasons. I'm certainly not against this pool situation. I do realize that there are a lot of children involved. I guess the best part of this maybe will be that it would give us time to look at our available resources, to know if we would be able to help in the future if it comes around.
Right.
My, a question I do have is, do we have any idea where the study is going to be centered around?
No, I haven't. There's not been really any particular location that I know of discussed. I think we had a meeting way back, Greg, when they first brought it up, and me and Greg went, and LBW was actually interested on their campus at one time. We mentioned about it, but they didn't have the funds and everything, and they was trying to figure out how to do it. So there's a bunch of ideas been thrown around, but no set in stone.
Okay. I know I had overheard a place, but that's neither here nor there, because I also thought the county school board, you know, they've got a wonderful location down on the highway. So there's lots of opportunity, I think, out there, and I hope that's all open for discussion in the future with this project. That's pretty much where I'm at.
It will be. I mean, the commission's going to make a decision whether to participate or not, and so certainly all that debate or discussion about location and other things will be on the table.
Right, and us doing our due diligence to look into it with the feasibility study is what we...
The feasibility study is going to look at conceptual site plan, pool floor plan, the operations analysis, what's it going to take to operate that thing, and then the estimate of construction costs. So I think it's in all the areas to give you a starting point, Ms. Lynn, to go to the table and have conversation between the entities about what that looks like and whether in fact we can move forward or not. So anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. We've discussed. If there's nothing else, we'll vote all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same say. And that, Karen. Thank y'all. Consider a website and social archiving software. Karen, you want to initiate?
I defer this to Kyle Adams, our communications director.
Kyle?
So on the website, when I started six weeks ago as communications director, that's really the first thing that I noticed that we really needed to have updated for several reasons. Things aren't easy to find, and the second reason is we have to be ADA compliant by 2026 per our attorney. So the current website that we use with US Next does not offer the ADA compliance feature, so we will have to look for another vendor, and hence come in Civic Plus. Civic Plus is a company that's operating in several places throughout Alabama, Troy, Daleville, Shelby County, several of them. Around the city of Andalucia uses some of their features also, and I believe this is one of the items that's going to come up for them in the future also. So this website here, it has a lot of features with it. Civic Send, Civic Engage, residents can subscribe to certain things. If we put out a newsletter, or if we put out our minutes, we put out our agenda, you can subscribe to just individual things that you may want. You may not want the newsletter, you may just want the minutes, or you may want the agenda, or the sheriff may have something that he wants to put out, and somebody wants to subscribe to the sheriff's things. They could subscribe to each individual topic that they want, and as soon as it's uploaded, it automatically blasts out of send to each person on those things. So that was one really great feature. Another feature is multiple calendars built into the website. So we could have an arena calendar, an event calendar, sheriff's office calendar, different things. He may be offering things, but a lot of different things where you can just click. And the big deal with this company is one and two-click features. That's one thing that they sell themselves on, is you can get to what you're finding in one to two clicks. So that's the big thing with this. You can post your jobs with an expiration date. It automatically comes off. If we talk about with engineer's office, you can put your bids on there, and it comes off, so it brings every department into being able to do a lot of different things on the website that could make things easier. So that's the website. Social archiving, right now, we have several departments in the county that have social media, whether it's Point A, Sheriff's Office, I'm not sure if you have one, Judge, Judge of Brooks. So several departments have it right now in the county. We want to have one also. But social archiving, it helps us uphold to those public records requests, so we have to be able to maintain public records even if they are digital. And right now, we don't have that ability. So social archiving provides that ability for us to be able to archive those records. When you're dealing with companies like Facebook, Instagram, or just say Meta, somebody may go in and edit a comment, that's lost forever in social media. Well, with this company, it captures everything that is put in there. So if somebody goes in, deletes a comment, edits a comment, we're able to pull that comment back and see why they may have been removed, or why they may have been blocked, or whatever the reason may be. Or we may get a request for that, and we're able to pull all those back with the search features that we would have. So that's what social archiving is in a nutshell. So that's the first item that I have for you guys.
We spoke with Morgan this morning, and Morgan said, and correct me, Morgan, I think I understood you say this is going to be a, basically a new kind of law that's coming in effect, didn't you say, on October 1st?
So with the ADA compliance or the open records tracking?
Yep.
So open records? Open record, the Alabama Open Records Law was amended by the legislature last session, and it goes into, the change is going to affect October 1st, and so it's going to require more tracking and documentation of requests that are received. So as I understand this functionality, that would be a tool that you all could use to help make compliance with that new requirement.
I think for us to be more open to the public and transparent, that this is really good, good website information, and of course, being compliant with the social media.
All right, so Kyle, on these pages, you've given us a little bit of the detail from the art, from the art... from the art, from the archiving function, also from the hosting function, and those have dollars associated with them?
Yes, so on the website, you'll go near the back of your packet for the website part, the website portion, year one, initial investment for this is twenty-seven thousand eight sixty-three. And I think the big thing to make sure everybody is aware of is this ADA compliance. Part of it is driving a lot of the cost because there's about ten different features for ADA compliance, whether it's contrast, font sizes, there's so many different things that we will be required to give the public on these things. So the ADA compliance, AudioEye, the ability for it to read the website, you know, so, so that's driving the cost and really for them to take our page that we have now and convert all this data into what they have. So that's the first year cost. Each year after is twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That is the website portion of this. On the social archiving for the public records.
Kyle, while you, while you're looking there, does that tie in like, just say to Judge Brooks's also like her social media site, the probate site, so that way?
So, so on the social archiving, it, it's not saying the county would be over Judge Brooks's social media or sheriff's or anybody's. They would still have complete control over their social media. It would just, they would sign into this account and it would be able to grab all that data and go in there in the event that she's requested certain documents of sheriff or, you know, or, or whichever department head is requested, we would have the ability to go in and comply with that request at that point. We wouldn't have access to go into Judge Brooks and post something for her. You know, that's still gonna fall on the respective elected officials, but we would have the ability to go in and comply with those requests when we get them. On the social archiving, and, and I did not print that out, but each of you have it in your packet. The first year price, if you combine both of these, you get a fifty percent discount the first year on the social archiving. I believe it ended up being thirty-nine hundred or so dollars. And then each year after it's seventy-five hundred. So that's the so, social archiving price.
Okay. So Commissioner, this, he's, we're asking for approval so that they can move forward with, with lining up the services. The cost will be actually budgeted in the coming year. It's not something we were asking for an expenditure out of this year's budget, but it will be budgeted assuming we approve it. So you've heard the presentation, you have more questions or thoughts or?
The current website we have now, how, how long do you say we've had?
As, as far as I know, it's the only one we've ever had. It's, it's been a while.
And it shows it.
And, and the recommendation on websites is that you change the features and the look of the website and the theme every five years. So obviously, I think we've had this current one for over twelve.
And you mentioned this morning that on this website it now can have one of the mercy banner across the top. If we have like tornado warnings or anything like that, you can go road closures or something.
Everything on the page. So you go to covecounty.com in the future and you'll be able to have the banners on the top, you know? Or if the engineer's office has a road that's closed, you know, we can put that feature at the top where it's going across, you know, one oh sevens now, you know, you know, we'd be able to have those different things.
Can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
You know, in, in my court, we're required to put out notices. We run those in the newspaper, we post those on the working board of the courthouse. Will, will we be able to do that on this website?
Yes.
But I don't know that it, I don't know that the law will allow that to replace what you post.
Not right now.
But it'll be addition, yeah.
And, and those could come up as news alerts and then it would automatically go within your page.
Yeah, good deal.
And, and I think the other thing to tell you is, is the website, it's about a six month rollout process because you've got different phases of it. Now, social archiving, if y'all approve that, we can be ready to roll October one. That's a, they get us the account, we're ready to go.
Alright. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
To approve both the, the, the entering contracts for the services?
Yes.
A second?
I'll say it, because I'm, like Tommy said earlier, I think it'll make it more transparent for everybody of what's going on. We can have it where everybody can actually go in and, and see a license.
We have a motion and a second. If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
The next item in your packets, the, consider the social media policy. As we just said, we currently have several departments that do have social media pages for their respective departments. The county does not have a overall county social media, but it's something that we aim to have if you approve this today. This policy would basically tie out a lot of loose ends that we may have and govern, you know, who is allowed to post on behalf of the county or those respective departments and such. So the, you know, some of the appropriate platforms, you know, a lot of the platforms would have to be approved by myself or Eric's not here, but our IT department, you know, so if it's not a, a secure site, Eric could say no, you know, we can't use that. So a lot of those would have to go through. But some of the ones that we would approve immediately would be Facebook, Instagram, X, YouTube, Pinterest, and Nextdoor. And those are some of the general ones. The only one that I think most people use here is Facebook. Some people may have an Instagram, those seem like the two most popular ones around. But the county, we actually have a YouTube page. So this would make us where we were compliant with that. So this would tell us that we'd have to have at least a minimum of two administrators per page, you know, how often the passwords would need to be changed. It would also tell us who would be the social media coordinators. So if, if, if the judge had one, you know, we would know, you know, who her coordinator is that's posting on behalf of her department. So it's something where it's happened and such. But at the end of this policy, there is also a moderation policy. And I think this is something to make sure that everybody knows is, you know, people complain at times that their comments may not be approved or they may not be, or they may get removed. And this moderation policy would be posted on each social media platform for each department. And if the person doesn't comply with that, their comment may be not approved to be on the page, or it may be removed. And now with this social archiving, we would have the, the proof to show why we did it. So, so that's what the social media comment moderation. So that's that, records management. And then the last page of that, it would talk about personal use. And there's only six or seven lines, or nine lines for personal use. So more of this policy pertains to how we operate our county social media. And then there's a few lines that, that refer to our employees and how they use it.
You had a chance to review this with the attorney? Or she's had a chance to review it? Any questions, comments? It's acceptable as proposed?
Yes. Kyle and I have exchanged a few edits back and forth and I don't have any concerns about what he's put together here.
Okay. Certainly think it's a step in the right direction to develop a policy of this sort, kind of implying by the seat of our pants and praying that wheels didn't run off, I guess, up to this point.
Kind of like the insurance policy for us.
It certainly might be looked at that way. With that being said, what are your wishes, commissioners? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve it. Adopt this policy.
Adopt the policy as proposed. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Questions or comments on that now? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And I will say on that, on that policy, there is an acknowledgement that we'll get to all the, all department heads and, and as we sent out with a travel per deal, you know, if the department has needed me to come and, and go over it with each department and have them sign those, we can get it back for the personnel files.
And this is, this is a first run at it. There certainly could be a, a place that is causing a problem we hadn't anticipated. So department heads, please communicate that to Kyle. I think the commission would be very open to going back and tweaking it if necessary. But I think it's a great way to protect all of us in our county. Alright, that's approved. Next item is H, consider out of state travel for the sheriff's department. H seventy-five has the details on that. Sheriff, anything you want to share with us particularly on that?
This, this training is in Glen Range. Jordan's just over the state line. So jail management training that I plan to attend. I don't see any, really anything special about it as far as, you know, requiring anything extra.
Are you going or?
I'm going.
Okay.
I'm going.
So is there a motion to approve this out of state travel?
I'll make a motion.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Questions for the sheriff?
And you're going alone? You're not taking any of the jail folks with you?
No.
I just noticed it said jail training, so I didn't know.
It is jail training. It's, it's, it's a lot of administrative stuff. I, I need to know a little more about it and.
Jennifer, good to go.
So we have a motion and a second. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, that carries. Thank you, sir.
Great Wolf Lodge, you ever been there?
Lynn, let me get you to come up and we'll move through yours and... Sorry, I got to right there and remembered I was gonna try to move you up the line a little bit, forgive us.
Very good.
Went through that pretty quickly. First item, I guess, is a solicitation of bids for cutters, a cutter for the engineer's department.
We're getting more and more calls every day for low light, low limbs and things on our county roads and dirt roads. And we're using right now our bucket truck, lot of, um, lot, it's a lot of manual effort for our guys to do that with that bucket truck. It's a safe procedure, but it just takes a long time. And we started looking at different options and as a matter of fact, at the last county association meeting down in Baldwin County, I was not able to make it because I was working on one oh seven, but some of the commissioners went by one of the booths there and picked up some documentation on a, a cutter. It's a sky trim. I think you got it in your, your packet there. It's a, it's made here in Alabama, right there in Montgomery. I went and looked at the factory last week and looked at, and actually got them a piece of equipment, actually ran the piece of equipment. I didn't cut any trees, but I went through all the motions of the machine. I looked there, they got two models, a fifty-five footer and a seventy-five foot model, but the seventy-five footer is an absolute, is a, is just way too big for our, our, our need. But the fifty-five foot machine is a, is a good machine that we would use to, to get these limbs. Like I said, it's got a fifty-five foot reach and it, it moves at a fifteen degree angle. If you're just in a straight line, it turns fifty-five degrees, which gets you about twelve foot off the paving edge. But you can actually still turn in the road. It's got a crab feature and a four-wheel drive feature, a four-wheel steer feature that can get you turned and you can cut a limb a little bit further, further back. But it's just, I'd like to get permission to solicit bids and see what'd come in. This is basically a, a sole source provider machine, there's nothing really like this, but I'd put it out with rights and space, big enough that would hopefully would draw attention to it and make it more than one bid on it. But it's a good piece of equipment, but I just request to put out a bid.
What's your estimate of cost?
About two twelve, two fifteen or so for this machine.
Get two of them, yeah.
We, uh...
We've already discussed.
We've had brush cutters that this kind of is stepping into the place of. They've had, they worked well, except when they didn't, they weren't heavy enough for the jobs or whatever. And this has given us an alternative to the brush cutters, replacing them or a little different.
The fifty-five, the fifty-five, this is a basically a circular saw, just like a regular skill saw you cut two by fours with. But it's a, it's two foot diameter, it runs about three thousand RPMs. And it's the same cutting head, same speed, same everything as on the seventy-five footer. It does the same exact thing as the big one, it's just on a fifty-five foot frame. And this doesn't have any depth, it runs about thirteen mile an hour down the road. You can actually, it's, it's mobile, so. But.
So he's requesting approval to request bids.
Can you have, can you have the bids by the mix?
Yeah, we go ahead, yeah.
Unlike, unlike the bid like we were discussing about on the county website, our rebuild, our, our rebuild site is set up to handle all bid laws. So I can actually post stuff on our, on our, as far as advertising that meets our, our competitive bid law on our, our site. So we'll get these, we'll get some specs written up and get that posted on the, the site and we'll set a, a time that has to be turned back in, so.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions on this? So the motion is to approve requesting bids. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Alright, that carries.
Thank y'all.
Item J, seed fertilizer.
Again, we just had the one bid from the Andalus Farmers Co-op and the price was pretty much in line like they were in the past. So I, I recommend approval for this.
So there's a, we, we, we requested bids on seed fertilizer, one bidder, and it was in line. So motion, the recommendation is to award the bid to the, to Farmers Co-op.
I'll make a motion.
There is a motion and a second. Motion and second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Alright, that's approved. Next K is ARPA funding paving projects. ARPA funded paving projects.
I believe that work she was handing out after the last meeting, with exceptionally one road needed to be added and that was gnawed away.
Gnawed road, yeah. And it puts the total to about one point two nine three million dollars for the projects. So, and I can go over the list again if you'd like.
If you don't mind calling out the list for everybody to know again.
Alright, District One was a di-stair road. That's a length of one point six eight mile that'll cost about three hundred and sixty-one thousand. District Two was Hidden Forest Lane up there, close to Clark Trailer.
I think it's pine wood, Hidden Forest. Because I looked this morning when I come by, I think it said piney wood, but anyway.
Yeah, but anyways.
It's going to Hidden Forest, it's going to Hidden Forest subdivision.
We got a lot of piney woods roads like that. And, and also gnaw road, the, the one at Amberwood from, from Clark Trailer is roughly a half a mile at a hundred and seven thousand. And the gnaw road is about one point oh seven, costs about one hundred and ninety-five thousand. District Three, we're looking at the Bogan Level Road, it's two point three four miles and this comes in at about five hundred and three thousand dollars. And then District Four, we're looking at Hamner. All these roads are less than, right at three tenths a mile or less. Hamner, Bridge Creek and Hub Road, these are existing dirt roads around the lake that, that definitely need, be great to have those things paved. And we're looking at worth about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in total cost for those three projects. They're about, about fifty thousand dollars a piece, a little less and for some. That's, that's the list, but it totals about one point.
Again, it's one point two?
One point two nine three.
Alright, one point two nine three million and it's appropriating ARPA funds for that.
Motion.
Your motion is there a second? Motion and second. Comments, questions, thoughts?
And I discussed it with the contract, they could probably move, they'll probably move on these projects about three weeks, two to three weeks, they'll be ready to start doing some of these. And some of our, our federal aid exchange funds and the rebuild funds as well, so.
Okay. We have a motion, second, no other comment, discussion about it, so we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. There are no, no votes, so it carries. What else you want to share as far as report?
Uh, it's dry weather, we're getting a lot of stuff done rug wise.
Status of one oh seven?
One oh seven, we're, we painted yesterday and we're finishing up the tie-in there at the fifty-five end. And it's, we'll do the final, with the contract finished, the final painting out there on the actual road. We're getting our signage up today, today, tomorrow, burning down our stop signs at the, on the, the old one oh seven on the Pigeon Creek end of the, the north end of the project. So that, we'll be ready to open up this week, should open that road up for, for traffic. So this week.
I thought it was already open.
It is, I mean technically it is, but it is, but I mean it'll be officially open once we get all the signs.
I didn't go around, I went between them.
But we'll get, we'll get barricades out of the roads once we get the signs up, so.
Well, thanks for getting that fixed. Boy, have a ribbon cutting? It's up to us, isn't it?
But we'll, but as far as other projects, we're working on our cross Murray Road, my Christie Smith Road. I met with one of the landowners yesterday, discussed some, some drainage details, so we're gonna be working with that landowner to, to take care of some stormwater on that project. And our bush hogging is going pretty good right now. pretty good right now, but I've actually got them cutting limbs, little lined limbs, that's, that's causing some issues. Today, we cut one that's drawn, yesterday, that's hanging up pretty close to the road, we got it down, and, uh, they're up on, uh, uh, Old Cedar Road working today, on, on some of those up there. And we had a house being moved on the, at Red Oak Care, and we got all those taken care of last week, it took a while to get all those, those limbs cut, so.
Good deal, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, any other, the, the last item on the, on the agenda is a discussion of the 2025 budget, but before I get to that, let me ask department heads, uh, any, anybody have anything you wanna share, report? Bring us up to date on, Sheriff, if you have anything?
Just keep a lookout on the weather this week and make sure our proper storms do not turn 40s.
Will you give us notice if there's a problem? You, will you give us notice if there's a pending problem? All right, good deal.
Email.
All right, good deal.
Uh, Kate? Check the website.
Kate, see anything? We're good?
Five of our 71st have arrived in Montgomery, um, I just got them in, um, this morning, so we can get in touch on, ready to get them.
Okay.
Very excited.
Good deal. Uh, all right, next item on the agenda is discussion of 2025 budget. Commissioners, you received copies of the requested budget, uh, expenditures from all the, it's a compilation of all the departments. Uh, I, I know that there are, uh, in reviewing it, we have a, something over 300,000, uh, proposal, proposed cuts to consider. Uh, we're not really ready to take action on it, but we certainly can discuss it. I know you've all had a chance to look at it. Do you have questions for this meeting, or do you want? Um, my thought is we'll take additional time and try to have it ready for, we will have it ready for action at the next meeting, which is in time enough, unless you have something you wanna bring up today.
I think in just a few more days, looking a few things on it.
Okay. Anybody else think differently, you get to that, just, you, you, you have it out there, and I encourage you to talk to the department heads, talk to the administrator, and let's be ready for action on that at the next meeting. All right. Uh, next on the agenda is to move into an executive session. Uh, we don't anticipate any action coming out of that session, this is to talk about a pending matter that's before the commission that we just need to discuss in, in the executive session.